Good evening. Welcome to the, what date is it, May 16th?
It is.
It's May 16th, welcome to the May 16th City Council meeting. I call the meeting to order. And we have some special guests with us tonight. We have KK and Wendy. Would you please come forward? And would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, you two stay up here, okay? KK and Mutte? And Wendy? Sorry. What school do you go to?
Westwood.
Come a little bit closer just to the microphone. There you go.
Go to Westwood.
There we go, okay. You go to Westwood. And KK, what grade are you in?
I'm in fifth grade.
Fifth grade. And Wendy, what grade are you in?
First grade.
First grade and fifth grade. And do you have a favorite subject?
I like math.
And how about Wendy?
Math.
Math? You both like math. And you told me that you do something special after school sometimes to practice your math. What do you do?
Math tutoring.
You go to math tutoring just so you can be even better at math? That's really cool. What do you do after school? You take some lessons?
Yeah. And I do soccer programs at the Family Resource Center.
Very good. And Wendy, what do you do? Do you play soccer as well?
I play, I do soccer and ballet and I also go to programs at the Family Resource Center.
Okay, so soccer and ballet and Family Resource Center, which is fun to go there. And who brought you here tonight?
My mom and dad.
So your dad has the camera on us, so he's waving at us and I'm gonna wave at him. And Mom, thank you for bringing them here tonight. And I'm gonna come down there and give you just a little treat and we're gonna take a picture, okay? One for you, it's chocolate. One for you, chocolate. You're gonna turn around right here, you're welcome. Or you stand on one side of me. Nice to meet both of you. Nice to meet you. Okay, instead of coming back up there to say we have proclamations, I'll just start down here. And the first proclamation is for the Community Action Agency, so would the representative please come forward? Whereas the community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas community action agencies have a 52-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, and whereas community action agencies have made an essential contribution to individuals and families in Oklahoma by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs, and whereas community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas welfare reform in Oklahoma has benefited from the state's partnership with community action agencies, and whereas the limited income continue to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity. And whereas Oklahoma and the entire United States must continue to promote economic security by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim in Stillwater, Oklahoma, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, the month of May 2016 as Community Action Month. Congratulations. I'll let you have the microphone.
I'd just like to personally thank this community for standing behind Koka through difficult times. It has been wonderful to see the support that's coming back onboard with us and I appreciate everyone standing behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to take a picture? Would you take a picture? Here's your proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the distinguished young women of Payne County. Representative? There we are. Whereas the distinguished young women of Payne County Scholarship Program is held each March to honor high school junior young women in Payne County. This countrywide scholarship program recognizes rewards and encourages excellence while promoting self-esteem among these young women. The 17th Annual Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Program occurred on Saturday, March 7th, 2016, with eight Payne County high school juniors participating, four from Stillwater, one from Perkins, one from Yale, one from Cushing, and one from Glencoe. Whereas Ms. Anna Teresa Attilis, daughter of George and Julia Attilis of Stillwater, was selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2017. And whereas by being selected the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2017, Ms. Attilis will be involved in community service, speaking engagements around Payne County, performing at various events, and presenting the Be Your Best Self message of self-confidence and commitment to Payne County schoolchildren. She will encourage young people to make a commitment to do their best to be involved. Be studious, be healthy, be ambitious, and be responsible. It includes, but is not restricted to, encouraging young people as they face the challenges of dealing with negative peer pressure and avoiding the perils of the abuse of alcohol and other drugs. Whereas by being selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2017, Ms. Attilis is automatically entered into the Distinguished Young Women of Oklahoma Scholarship Program to be held July 20th through 23rd, 2016 in Bartlesville. Ms. Attilis will compete for the Oklahoma State Title in the categories of fitness, interview, self-expression, talent, and scholarships. Now therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, proclaim the 16th day of May, or today, as Anna Teresa Attilis Day. Congratulations. And we also wish her good luck. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much.
I would just like to thank the City of Stillwater for supporting the Distinguished Young Women Program because it definitely supports all of the high school girls in their endeavors and definitely has given me lots of confidence. And I know that if I didn't live in Stillwater, I wouldn't have had these opportunities. So I'm really excited to give it back to the community through my endeavors as Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the Public Works. Matthew? Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of a citizen's everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. I, Gina J. Noble, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, as Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And thank you for what you do. And I know that this week is Public Works Week because of this, but also because you're visiting elementary schools this week.
That is correct.
Okay, I'll let you tell a little bit about that.
With our efforts in Public Works Week, just to kind of get familiar with the public, we like to take that opportunity to go to each and every elementary school that we can that can fill all of our trucks and units and give the kids an opportunity to come and see and ask questions and educate the public as much as we can. We like getting the information to kids is really great. They love it and it's helpful for the schools and us and something that we're really proud of and like to take the time to do every year. And that's the most important thing is to try to get that education to the public and that's what we like to do. I appreciate it.
I like it when you have the trucks out in front of here.
Oh, yeah.
We're like an elementary school.
Yeah.
This week is called Touch a Truck Week, right?
That's correct, yeah.
We didn't get to do it today because of the rain, but we will be where tomorrow?
Tomorrow we will be at Skyline Elementary. Wednesday we'll be at Highland Park. And Thursday we will be at Will Rogers.
And then Friday?
Friday we wrap it up with a little celebration at Strickland Park, so.
Okay.
Awesome. Great job.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay. Thank you for everybody for being here. That takes us to the Consent Docket. I'm sorry. Before we go to the Consent Docket, we need to do the presentation for the American Public Works Association. And... Starla? Charlotte is doing that presentation. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I actually have Paul DeAndre from APWA President for Oklahoma. He's here today to give these awards, since it is the city. And I am chapter secretary, but I didn't want to present those awards, right? So we have him here and a presentation that we gave at the APWA Conference in just early May. Maybe?
Hi, thank you. As she said, my name's Paul DeAndre. I'm the Oklahoma President of APWA, American Public Works Association. For those of you that don't know, we're a group that is made up of public works professionals, consultants, and contractors who work in the public works arena. Our main goal is to advocate for, educate about, and promote public works and public works professions. So we're very involved in National Public Works Week. I love hearing about getting out to the schools, teach kids, because, you know, it's great line of work. There's a lot of different jobs in public works that a lot of people don't realize and it can be great lifelong careers. So we really enjoy hearing that. One of the ways we do promote public works profession is we give out annual awards through both the Oklahoma State Chapter and the National Organization. And we have over 50 different awards that are available. This year we gave out four. So they really want to encourage everyone to promote people and projects for awards. It's not just projects. Most of the submissions we get are about a project somebody once submitted for the award. But we have, over half of the awards we have available are for public works professionals and team members that just show exceptional service. So we really want to encourage if you know somebody in the Public Works Department here in Stillwater that's doing a great job, next year, get their name out to us and we'd be happy to honor them too. The award we're here to present tonight is to the City of Stillwater. They are silver winner this year for a transportation project less than $5 million. The project in question was the Sanger Road Bridge. It's a Pony Trust Bridge just north of Sixth on Sanger. A historic bridge, they did a restoration on that. The primary contractor was Meridian Contracting. And we have Tyler Davis here tonight representing them. Michael Stevenson with City of Stillwater. And Stacy Loffler with BKL, who were the design consultant on the job. If you guys want to come forward, we've got a plaque to present. They're all the same.
Just so that you can see a picture online, or I guess we don't have it shown right now. Darn it. Missed my opportunity. You would see the orange bridge. There you go. So if you get down on the side of the bridge and take a look facing northwest, or looking northwest, that would be the view. But we have the drone up there, so we have great drone pictures that will get up on the website so you can see it from above.
Very nice, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, that takes us to the Consent Docket. So I will ask councilors, does anyone wish to remove an item for discussion? Or is there... Well, actually, if no one wishes to remove an item, I do have one request. Mr. McNichol, if it's okay, on the Consent Docket on Item H, could you give just a little bit more explanation without me pulling it?
Sure. Catholic Church is building a rather sizable new building at the corner of Country Club at McElroy. And that area of town is on a real water system. And they found themselves, because of the size of this facility that they're building, which the drawings and the photographs are pretty impressive. They needed an eight-inch water line to supply the sprinkler system, fire suppression needs. And actually by state law and because of the flows in that area, we could not provide that flow for that building. And after much discussion between the church and the city, the fellows in the water department came up with, they remembered that when OSU discontinued using a part of our system, that there was a relatively new 10-inch line that runs the length of McElroy from Sanger, and that that could do two things. One, it could serve the fire needs of the Catholic Church, and it would improve the pressure and flow issues on that real water system on up North Country Club because that area is bound to continue to develop since that new road is there. And we found this to be an absolutely beautiful public-private, and it's kind of different to call a church private, but they are, partnership that serves not only the citizens of Stillwater, because part of that area is in the city limits, but serves the church. And we both get some value out of this agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Counselors, anything else? Or is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And that is... There we go. The Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to General Orders. And Mr. McNichol, Item A, consider the sale of city-owned property at 301 South Washington Street.
Special Projects Director John McLennie will provide information on that.
I will pull up a picture to show it to you. Okay, this is 301 South Washington. Wanted to see if the council was interested in selling this property. This is a parking lot currently that is just to the north of Fuzzy's in, on the strip. And the property was purchased in 2008. It cost us $475,000 at the time. The funds for the purchase came from the half-cent transportation sales tax. It was purchased as right-of-way so that Third Street could be punched through from Hester to Washington. The transportation project was dropped by a council vote on May 3rd, 2010, the reason being primarily from reading the report that the sales tax was not coming in at a rate that would support all the projects and needs that they had at the time, and so they recommended dropping that project. It's no longer viable in any way at all because OSU has since purchased property in there and is planning to build a performing arts center in the middle of where Third Street would have gone. So unless we're gonna go underground, we're kind of not gonna go through there anymore. The property currently provides eight parking spaces. It is paved for that. The purchase price of the property at the time included a building. So the property, the building was torn down in anticipation of putting the road through. The property is not worth what it was when we bought it. More than likely, we will not be able to sell it for what we paid for it. Couple of options, as we can continue to use it as public parking. I did take this issue to the Parking Steering Committee, which is kind of charged with looking at the parking study that we did a few years ago and continuing to update and look at issues. They recommended that we go ahead and consider the sale of this because of a couple of reasons. The area already has a surplus of parking. I know it doesn't look like that at times, but it does. And in addition to that, OSU's building a 680-space parking garage along with the Performing Arts Center. 70 of those spaces will be open for public parking. It'll be paid public parking, but it will be available. The other option is to declare the property surplus, sell it at public auction, and put the money back into the half-cent transportation sales tax fund for additional transportation projects. And staff is recommending that we sell this property and put the money back into the half-cent transportation sales tax. We'll try to answer any questions.
Counselors?
So really, it's just, it's a parking, eight parking spaces?
Eight parking spaces.
So it's not generating any other funds for us at this point and not?
No.
Could they be paid parking spaces?
They could.
Could they be more than eight?
Maybe. I would have to see how wide that is altogether.
It's pretty small.
Pretty tight. At most, it would be 16. So we could double it.
Eight to 16? Fit 16 Smart Cars in there? Because I know 16 of my trucks ain't fitting in there.
If you could get eight on one side and eight on the other, if it fits, it would depend on the total width, but...
You're gonna make a lot of insurance adjusters mad. You're gonna have a lot of backing accidents.
Well, keeping you busy.
Could we, does it have to go to transportation? If we sold it?
Well, the money came from the half-cent transportation tax, so it should go back there.
It's dedicated, okay. I was just thinking maybe we could put it in the Form-based code area. Help with some improvements.
Well, it could go to a street project in the Form-based code area.
Do we have any idea how much we think we're gonna get from it?
I will have to have it appraised if we decide to go forward. The current assessed value listed on the Payne County Assessor's website is $211,000 with the property and the improvements.
We bought it for how much?
Well, we lost, the building was taken down, so.
Come again?
There was a building taken down, so that...
Yeah. I was just thinking, it might be worth more right there.
It may sell, it may sell for more than that. Don't know.
That is prime property. I think anyone would jump at the chance to get that.
We had a piece of property that we sold about three or four years ago that was closer to Sixth Avenue. It was just about one lot off the strip. It was 1,000 square feet roughly. We thought it would sell for somewhere around $20,000. It sold for $96,000, so if that gives you an idea.
Didn't we just sell a lot in that area?
That was, it was about three years ago that we sold that one.
If we approved this tonight and the appraisal came in really low, we would already have approved it.
No, you're just authorizing him to start the process.
Okay.
We would go through an actual competitive bidding process to sell the property.
And then I would come back for...
And then if you got a price that you like, you could approve it at that time.
Okay.
So it'll come back?
Yes.
Mr. McNichol, is there anything else?
Well, historically, one of the problems digging through references, there was an existing apartment building. This property was acquired first. And the idea was to acquire additional rights-of-way to punch Third Street through. And we ran into an issue with this apartment complex because had we purchased that right-of-way, it would have diminished the number of spaces that they had available and it became a real issue. And it started to get what would have appeared to have been very, very expensive and probably would have entailed the purchase of that entire apartment complex. So the people at the time decided that they would back up. The building had already been destroyed and hence the council's vote back in 9009?
2010.
10?
May 3rd.
To cancel that project. And the Performing Arts Center has...
All other...
Sure.
I move that we move forward with putting it, as counting it as surplus and starting the proceedings for that.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to count this property as surplus and ask staff to move forward on finding out the value?
Can I ask one more question before we...
Absolutely.
Is it, I mean, I like the question about parking meters. I mean, how much do eight parking meters there generate?
Well, it depends on what we decide to charge for parking. Actually, next week, we'll be bringing recommendations from the Steering Committee about parking downtown. Actually, next week, we'll be bringing recommendations from the Steering Committee about parking downtown, and one of the options is to look at a parking management system that would involve charging for parking, so that might eventually lead to doing that in areas like Washington.
Can we look at what might be generated from this lot, kind of while we're going forward with...
Sure.
The surplus, you know? So then we can at least look at numbers and see if it's worth keeping?
Well, it would be roughly a dollar, a dollar a space per hour per car between eight and five, correct?
Yeah.
One dollar?
Dollar an hour. If, if the, the future recommendation is considered.
I think, you know, beyond parking meters, you could sell. I mean, you could rent those spaces for a monthly or quarterly or yearly.
There's definitely several options.
I don't know if we want to get into the...
The Steering Committee recommendation...
I feel like you and I are thinking the same thing, because we're staring at...
For 16 spaces.
But I'm seeing another Fuzzy's or something right there. I mean, someone's going to buy this and build something right there.
That was...
Parking garage that we're going to utilize, right? I mean, I think we're going to have some competing...
We're Americans. We want to park right next to...
That's true. We don't have to walk...
Most of the members of the Parking Steering Committee felt like this property would be better used as another business in that area.
Okay. Well, if we can see the numbers.
Which we would hope would generate more sales tax collection in a dollar an hour per car.
As I said, I'd like, yeah, exactly.
Just so I make sure I've got it right, do you want to see the numbers on the appraisal before we go forward with the auction process, or wait till we get to the end of that and then make a decision?
So you're going to go through the auction process and present us a number, and we can say no at that point?
Yes.
If it's not high enough?
I think we go forward.
I'm fine with going forward, and then also getting numbers on what we think we can generate revenue-wise from a parking, some sort of parking lot there.
I could actually bring you that next week.
And then we can just compare it when we get the number on the bid and say, yeah, it's worth selling or not worth selling.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine moving forward on...
Are you clear?
Yes.
Did we repeat that?
I am clear.
Are we clear?
Well, I think so. So we want parking numbers, and we want a value of the property, and we will discuss it after you bring that back to us, that information back to us.
We have the...
Correct?
We need to vote.
We need to vote. Okay.
Just so I'm clear, the motion is to move forward with the auction process.
So we had a motion and a second to move forward with the auction process. And the vote, it is approved for the auction process with a vote of five to zero.
I'll bring you some theoretical parking numbers next week, since we're talking about parking anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to resolutions. Resolution number CC-2016-8.
Mayor, could we hold that item until the ordinance, second reading, ordinance 3339?
Absolutely. Tell me when I need to come back to that.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, resolution CC-2016-14, a resolution adopting the guidelines for processing tort claims and workers' compensation claims valued at less than $50,000. Mr. Dorman.
This is the resolution that will establish the guidelines for processing tort claims and workers' compensation claims in accordance with the ordinance that you passed about just right at 30 days ago.
Counselors, questions or discussion? Motion to approve?
Motion, approve or adopt?
Approve.
Approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-2016-14. Please vote. And resolution CC-2016-14 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to item C, which is resolution number 2016-17, a resolution of the City of Stillwater nominating Marcy Lamb as a candidate to fill an open position on the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, or OKMRF, representing District Five for a five-year term beginning October 1, 2016 through October 1, 2023. Mr. Dorman.
This is, the title is fairly self-explanatory. Ms. Lamb would be representing the City of Stillwater for this five-year period. She is eligible to serve because she is a retiree of the city and is currently participating in the plan, and those are the requirements for candidacy with regard to the OKMRF.
Okay, and I misspoke. It's 2016 through 2021. Sorry about that. Counselors, questions, discussion, or motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve CC-2016-17. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to ordinances. On first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3341, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 25 Corridor Redevelopment Area Planning District by creating Section 2345 to petition to annex into Corridor Redevelopment Area Planning District.
Counselors, questions or discussions?
This is one of the three ordinances that you reviewed at the public hearing about two, I guess it was two meetings ago. It's taken us a little bit of time to get these into form, because they are in the Form-Based Code section. This one would create the process to bring properties that are adjoining on the perimeter of the Form-Based Code area into the area itself.
At their request.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, advance. Oh, the second reading, advance to second reading. Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance. Ordinance number 3341, please vote. Ordinance number 3341 is advanced with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to item B on first reading. Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3342, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Appendix 1, Form-Based Codes, Article 4, General Provisions, Section 44 Vehicle Parking Provisions by amending Section 4.42 Design Standards by deleting in its entirety Section 4.4.4 How to Calculate Shared Parking by creating new Section 4.4.4 Parking Reduction for Shared and Mixed Uses and Providing for Exception.
Counselors, discussion?
Self-explanatory.
Discussion or motion to advance?
Motion to advance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance. Ordinance number 3342, please vote. Ordinance number 3342 is advanced with a vote of five to zero. On first reading, Mr. Dorman, item C.
Ordinance number 3343, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Appendix 1, Form-Based Codes, Article 4, General Provisions by amending and replacing Table 13, Summary of Requirements for Transsect Zones by amending and replacing Table 18, Public Frontages by deleting in its entirety Table 23, Throughway Connector Streets, Table 27, Neighborhood Streets, Table 28, I don't know what that word is. It says woo-nur. For today, we'll use that word. And connector streets, Table 27, wait a minute, I'm back on that one, sorry, Table 29, Lane End by creating new Table 23, Duck Street, Table 24, Mixed Use, 100-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 25, Mixed Use, 80-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 26, Mixed Use, 75-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 27, Mixed Use, 66-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 28, Neighborhood, 60-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 29, Neighborhood, 50-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 30, Neighborhood, 45-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 31, Neighborhood, 40-Foot Right-of-Way, Table 32, Neighborhood, 30-Foot Right-of-Way, and Table 33, Neighborhood, 20-Foot Right-of-Way by deleting in its entirety Map 3, Thoroughfares.
Could you repeat that?
I still don't know what the woo-nur thing is, but I'll find out.
Really, really.
Counselors, discussion or motion or questions?
Motion to advance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance. Ordinance number 3343, please vote. And ordinance number 3343 is advanced with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to second reading. Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3339, an ordinance approving and adopting the Stillwater West 51 Development District Project Plan Designating and Adopting Project Area and Increment District Boundaries, Establishing a Date for Creation of Increment District Number Two, City of Stillwater, Adopting Certain Findings, Authorizing the City of Stillwater to Carry Out and Administer the Project Plan, Establishing a Tax Apportionment Fund, Declaring Apportion Funds to be Special Funds of the City of Stillwater or Alternative Authorized Entity, Authorizing the Use of Sales Tax Increment Revenues for the Payment or Financing of Certain Project Costs, Authorizing the Use of Other Resources to Pay for or Finance Project Costs, Authorizing the Stillwater Economic Development Authority or Alternative Authorized Entity to Issue Apportionment Notes and Carry Out Certain Provisions of the Project Plan, Ratifying and Confirming the Actions, Recommendations, and Findings of the Review Committee and the Planning Commission, Directing Continuing Apportionment and Providing for Severability.
Counselors, discussion, questions, motion?
Will we come back to the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. The resolution would be the next item.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Ordinance number 3339, please vote. And with a vote of four to one, ordinance number 3339 is adopted. On second reading, Mr. Dorman, ordinance number 3340.
Do you want to do the resolution first?
Yes, that makes more sense.
And then we'll do 3340. That'd be ordinance, or excuse me, resolution 16-8, and that's the companion.
Okay. A resolution establishing criteria for evaluation of development proposals for projects located within the boundaries of Increment District Number Two, City of Stillwater. It's the Stillwater West 51 Tax Increment Financing District. Mr. Dorman.
This is a resolution that was adopted by the Review Committee and as part of the review of the West 51 Development District. And their thought was that this would be something that the council could use and have for future councils to review with regard to the criteria that were appropriate for evaluating TIP applications that come before the council as a result of the adoption of ordinance 3339. These items, as it states in the resolution, are things that you would, these are findings that you would basically make when you go through and do an approval of a development plan. No single item is dispositive one way or another, so if maybe you failed on one, but you did well on everything else, the project can still be approved. But the idea was to just basically go through and have a list of things for the council and future, this council and future councils to look at when doing an evaluation of a development plan that is proposed.
Counselors, discussion?
Motion to approve.
I would like to discuss first, yes.
I did want to thank the, what was that?
Nothing.
Oh. I would like to thank the committee for redoing the resolution and adding particularly the section about wages, benefits, and community involvement. I understand that there was quite a bit of discussion about how to word that, and I hope that it will be used seriously by this council and other councils. So thanks to the committee.
I was going to say the same thing. I just, I didn't know if there were certain highlights. I know we went back to the committee to talk about some changes. Were there some major ones that were changed? And could you, I mean, for the public knowledge too of what...
Are you asking me personally?
Well, I know you served on the committee's team.
I did, for this one meeting.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, we, so we talked about this in the committee, specifically the last criteria here was discussed, although a couple of changes were also made in the resolution, be it further resolved part, just to make it clear that it wasn't singularly dispositive of any of these issues. But the last one about positive social benefit, including wages and benefits, was discussed within the committee. It was, the language was kind of tweaked around a little bit to make sure it didn't sound like there was a specific threshold that had to be met necessarily, but that all of these things would be considered together. These criteria, because they are all things that the council is supposed to be looking at and considering, but not necessarily checking a box, you know, it did meet, you know, X or Y on there. The reword was done to make sure that this one didn't have a specific check-the-box kind of threshold to it as well. So that was the main change made by the committee to get to this language.
I just appreciate the fact that there's a guideline, some guidelines, so that we do have an opportunity to look at businesses coming in and want to be established there, and whether or not they qualify, or we think it's necessary for them to have additional funding.
I agree. I think it's also helpful for the public to understand what the council is considering when we're looking at incentivizing business developments, that it's not just a matter of a developer coming in and saying they want money, but there are a number of factors that we are going to consider very thoughtfully when it comes to deciding whether that money should be spent.
And it's the same thing every time.
Yes.
And that's a good thing. I think that's fair.
This also creates discussion among the council for looking at, I kind of like the check-the-box. I know that's not something that we're supposed to do, but, you know, deciding on an incentive district is a hard thing to do. And what I like about this is we are only voting that we could approve something. We haven't approved anything, and we get to approve each and everything that comes through there, or makes an application, actually, and we can approve or not approve based on these criteria, which I think, I really do appreciate the committee for its work. It's worked at least six months, probably, a very thoughtful...
December, yes.
Yeah, very thoughtful discussion, and I really like the last edition, which you did last week. So I think it gives us thoughtful, it gives us things to consider, and we don't just have to approve or not approve, because this is a very hard thing to do. And when we leave, it still gives other councils guidelines. So, thank you. With that, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
To approve?
Approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2016-8. And this resolution is approved with a vote of five to zero. We will now go back to reports from officers and, no, did I?
3340.
3340. On second reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3340, ordinance rezoning tracks is then located at 506, 510, 514, and 524 South Lincoln Street, RTM, two-family and multifamily residential district, 2O Office District.
Discussion.
Motion to adopt?
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt. Ordinance number 3340, please vote. And ordinance number 3340 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Now, that takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Just one item. I'm happy to report that we received notification from the governor's office this morning that both of the charter amendments that were approved by the voters have been approved by the governor's office and have now been filed with the Oklahoma Secretary of State. And of course, as soon as we received that, we ran to the county courthouse to file them here, too. So everything is in place, and we will start the final process of implementing those. So beginning with the 2017 elections, we will start doing things a little differently.
All right. Very good news. All right. Very good news. Thank you, and thanks to the committee.
Charter Review Committee, yes, very much.
City Manager.
I have one item to report. There's a lot happening at Stillwater Regional Airport right now, and I have a construction update. The cosmetic updates to the main terminal, they're about ninety-nine percent complete. Part of those upgrades include TSA and airline ticket offices and a ticketing counter and a departure terminal. And you approved one of those things tonight in the consent docket. The new wildlife, uh, it, people are calling it security fencing. Actually, wildlife fencing is about ninety-five percent complete. Construction will begin next week on the South Industrial Access Road, as well as two additional parking lots. And I would just remind everyone that as of August twenty-third, to fly StillwaterOK.com.
Thank you. Counselors, news?
Yes, on behalf of the City of Stillwater, I want to recognize two outstanding staff members who are taking on leadership roles outside the professional organizations. Fleet Superintendent John Mays is now the President of the Oklahoma Public Fleet Management Association. And Luann Fisher, Waste Water Treatment Plant Superintendent, recently adopted the position of Vice President of the Oklahoma Water Environment Association. So congratulations to the two of them. I think it's great when you do extra beyond what you do on your normal eight to five or however long you work your workday. So congratulations, and we congratulate you on your appointments.
And we appreciate your hard work.
Even though I'm freezing cold, it's very exciting to think that on this thir, uh, next Thursday, May twenty-sixth, at eleven AM at Boomer Lake Park, will, everyone is invited to the grand opening of the Boomer Lake Splash Pad, a long-awaited event. The event will begin with a ribbon cutting. The water will be then turned on for children, no, just children? To start using the splash pad.
State of mind.
State of mind.
State of mind, okay.
Your childhood.
Oh, children at heart. I want to thank, we all would like to thank Stillwater Medical Center, the Stillwater Community Foundation, and the Stillwater Masonic Lodge for their donations to both Boomer Lake and Southern Woods Splash Pads. Big thanks also goes to the City of Stillwater employees who constructed the splash pads.
And I walked by there two or three times last weekend, this weekend, and they look awesome.
They look great.
They really do. And the sprinklers were getting the grass green, and there's a fence around it now, which there wasn't last week, so. It looks awesome. It looks like fun. Looks fun time.
They'll probably let you go.
I think, I'm, I'm showing up.
Okay.
Counselor Nahara.
Yes, tomorrow evening, myself and Counselor Zanotti and City Manager McNichol will be at Aspen Coffee Fountain Square from five-thirty to seven for our counselor and manager office hours. So we welcome anyone to come out and join us and have a cup of coffee and talk about anything that is on your mind or any problems you might be having.
And if you can't attend tomorrow's office hours, or you just don't want to talk to Counselor Nahara.
Because most people.
You can come on Tuesday, May thirty-first to the Aspen Coffee at Lake View Point. And Vice Mayor Darlington and I will be out there from five-thirty to seven on Tuesday, May thirty-first.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, I did also want to say, I saw today that this week is National Law Enforcement Week, so see a police officer? Thank them. Thank you for your years of service, so we appreciate all of our first responders in law enforcement this week, so.
Absolutely. Anything else? Okay, that takes us to appointments. Item A, appointment to the Stillwater Library Board. Sally Harris will continue to serve through June, but would like to be replaced at this time. And Monica Turek does not wish to be reappointed. And we have one application on file from Wanda Cunningham to fill the seat of Monica Turek. Do we have a, so I make a motion to appoint Monica Turek to fill Wanda Cunningham, no. I make a motion for Wanda Cunningham to fill Monica Turek's position with the board.
Second.
Give a, with motion and a second, please vote. And Wanda Cunningham, with a vote of five to zero, will now replace Monica Turek. And thanks, Monica, for your service. And that takes us to item B, Business Improvement District Number One Advisory Board. Sue Presley, Kyle Gibbs, Marcia Forbes, and Jim McCullum have been serving since their terms expired in January, and they all wish to be reappointed, but there is one more vacancy. Applications are being accepted for the bid district area number eight, which is bounded by Eleventh and Twelfth Avenues between Main and Duncan Streets. Applications, applicants must be property owners in the district or the owner's representative. So we will be accepting applications for that. And that takes us to item C, Public Housing Authority Board, and.
Are you going to reappoint those individuals?
Yes, we are. I make a motion to reappoint Sue Presley, Kyle Gibbs, Marcia Forbes, and Jim McCullum. We have a motion and a second to appoint to the Business Improvement District Number One Advisory Board. And they are appointed with a vote of five to zero, and we would like to thank them for their service as well. And that takes us to item C, Public Housing Authority Board. Mr. McNichol.
Um, last week you appointed Kay Stewart to the Stillwater Public Housing Authority Board from an application that she had provided. And did that based on a report from the city, the city staff, that Connie Stokes did not want, wished to be reappointed. And through, uh, just plain old miscommunication, Ms. Stokes did want to be reappointed. Kay Stewart, those of you that know her, is a very gracious woman. And in, once the situation was explained, decided that she would step aside and give Ms. Stokes the opportunity to be reappointed to another term at Stillwater Public Housing Authority.
Okay, and so do we need to vote, make a motion for this?
Make a motion to appoint and then.
Appoint Connie. Okay, so I make a motion to appoint Connie Stokes on the board of the Stillwater Public Housing Authority, so.
Second.
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 We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And Connie Stokes is appointed to the Board, Public Housing Authority Board, with a vote of five to zero. And we would also, we'd like to thank Ms. Stokes for her service, and we'd also like to, to thank Kay for being gracious. And we will get you on the board. Counselors, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. We, uh, city council is adjourned. City council meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero, and it is six twenty-eight. I call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting and trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or discuss? Or is there a motion for the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Reports from officers and boards. General counsel.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General manager.
Nothing to report.
Trustees.
I just wanted to say, I forgot to say this, and counsel, a Wunner is a living street. I looked at it.
Thank you.
Whatever that is, a living street, right? Am I right? I'm getting a, a head nod. You can't see that in the public, but Paula Dennison, no streets.
So I guess it was a typo.
No, that's a, that's a real thing.
All right, well, we'll, we'll carry it on to the next.
I'd just like that to be on the record. He had the correct saying.
You don't have to go back and change it.
With that information, would anyone, trustees, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. And the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting is adjourned at six twenty, six thirty with a vote of five to zero. Thank you for coming and watching, and everybody have a good week.